Yes, I guess I got that written down.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Grand Travis County Board of Commissioners. It's a special meeting. Today is Monday, August 11th. It's nine o'clock. If you'd please turn off any cell phones. I would appreciate that. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Lathrop? Max Power?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Thomas?
Here.
Enman?
Here.
Rennie?
Yeah.
Limco?
Here. Thank you very much. Next is the time for our first public comment. Do you want to read the rules, Ms. Lanning, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. A, any person wishing to address the board shall state his or her name and address. B, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairman shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may at his or her discretion extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak at this time? Please.
Terry Flynn, Assistant Chief, Grand Travis Metro Fire. And I just wanted to mention that our recent successes in Metro's increase in capabilities to their communities been, you know, we've really gone a long way. And one of the key components, one of our big partners in this is Central Dispatch. And I just want to remind how important Central Dispatch is in the entire process of getting out into the community and getting our first responders on the scene. So, just, you know, they got my support. And anything that you guys can do to, you know, make them better, they'll make us better. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Please.
My name is Richard Higgins. I live at 7412 Russ Noble Drive, which is in Long Lake Township in Grand Travis County. I come here as merely a citizen and a taxpayer. The majority of what I've heard about the ballot question comes from the record eagle, so I apologize if I don't have the whole story. I was able to take advantage of the fact that you have a strategic plan for 2013 through, I believe, 2015 or 16, and this falls generally but vaguely within that plan. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. The fact is that I am a big supporter of public safety, of 911 and E-911 services. And I'm also a supporter of well-executed plans and requests for tax increases. I'm a supporter of operations excellence. My specific comment regarding the ballot language for the millage increase is to project, if you would, a well-planned, well-thought-out purpose for the increase. And that would include, to me as a citizen and taxpayer, a great deal of detail that has not yet, or at least to my ability to be able to find that, has not been communicated. There are undoubtedly specific needs for technology improvements to accommodate social media changes and the shift to voice over the Internet, which may or may not be covered, and to take care of prepaid E-911 calls that can be problematic, and I don't believe revenue is collected for that yet either. It would also be important to understand what failed with the request to the Michigan Public Service Commission in the previous request when less than the full amount was given. So I would ask that we understand also, as citizens who ultimately will vote on the millage increase, what the difference between shifting funds from the general fund to take advantage of the millage increase that would free up other funds that almost sounds like a tax increase? And then also, if there is a capital or a significant improvement that is requested in technology, that that be a one-time cost with a sunset on those charges. Thank you. That concludes my request for an opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to make comment?
My name's Theo Weber, Grand Travis Rural Fire Chief. Sorry for my tardiness here, but I'm not here to speak about any particular technology or funding source, just to identify that we have a problem, especially in the rural areas. I have two townships that I can't reach on a regular basis. Lake, Long Lake Township and Fife Lake area, Fife Lake Township. We have a real communication problem there. I've been told that the two towers in those areas need transmitter as well as a receiver, and we only have one on each of those towers. I, in one of my areas, Fife Lake, I've supported and funded my own radio system, which I shouldn't have to be doing as a fire service. We take your signal and we repeat it and send it back out because the signal isn't strong enough in our area to cover those areas. So, just wanted to identify those problem areas in our response, my response area. Cover nine townships. Those two townships are particularly difficult to communicate to my responders with. I know there's technology to fix this. I can use a portable radio, an 800 megahertz radio from this room, and talk to a portable radio in Marquette. And I can't take my portable radio here and talk to my responders in Long Lake. There are technologies to fix these problems. I know it takes a lot of money to do it. Not sure what the proper funding source is. Just here to speak on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the public wish to make comment? I would like to read a couple that I've gotten. One is Gordon Nyheart. What percentage of the wire is money goes to the PSAPS? I know a lot goes into training funds, but with all the landlines disappearing, constant funding for equipment and depreciation has to be factored in. Also have another one from a young lady who happens to be my cousin's daughter, who works for a dispatch center down in Troy. And a lot of citizens don't understand how much equipment and training we need for the next-generation 911 system that our cities or counties are being required to install. Some cities won't allow for a millage or choose, and choose cutbacks instead. This could mean not always being able to have our 911 call answered promptly. The surcharge is the perfect solution to fund the required upgrade, keep staffing levels safe, and be a minimal expense to the citizens we serve. So those are two that I have received. Any Commissioners would like to make comment at this time? Sunny?
I guess, first I'd make reference and remind Commissioners of a letter we received about two weeks ago from one of our current dispatchers, which complained about our staffing levels that we've been able to maintain, along with other issues that are being addressed along the way. But staffing in Central Dispatch has been a problem for a long time, and we all know that. Chief Weber talked about areas in Long Lake Township that you can't talk to. I will absolutely verify that. For 36 years, I carried a radio in Long Lake Township, and I can tell you, there's hundreds of times that I've been in the house and cannot talk to someone, whether it be dispatch or whether it be someone else. So, upgrades to our system are absolutely essential to the safety of our public, and, you know, it's our responsibility to figure out how to pay for it. You know, as you all know, I wasn't real excited about holding this public hearing this morning, but that being said, you know, we're here, we're going to do this. But the most important piece about it is whether we approve this today, which I certainly hope we will approve some sort of language today, an education piece for the public has to occur over the next five months. It's absolutely essential that all of the emergency services coordinators and emergency services people support this decision and educate the public about it. I sat here 10 years ago, 15 years ago, when we put millage on the ballot before, or put surcharge on the ballot before, and our emergency service providers in the communities did not support that proposal at that time, and we got our tails handed to us. So it's absolutely essential. If we're going to move forward with this and we're going to ask the public, we have to be a unified front. This is essential to provide public service in our community. If we are not a unified front as public, as public safety people, this will not have a chance. We have to be a unified front, and that goes for all of the township fire departments, the metro division, the rural division, sheriff's department. You know, as you may remember, the state police came out pretty hard against us the last time, last go-around. At that time, they were just implementing their 800 system. And they were not up and operational at that time, but, you know, they were telling us, we didn't need our system, their system was going to take care of us. Well, the people agreed with that idea that we shouldn't spend our local money to do that, and guess what? Their system didn't take care of us. And we're, here we are 10, 12, 15 years later, and we still don't have an adequate radio safe service in much of our community.
Larry?
Well, as you know, I was one of the Commissioners and insisted that we hold off on a vote and have this public hearing, so we can get members of the public and people in the industry to make comment regarding the possibility of this ballot language. At that time, we did not have the background information that Jamelle just handed out, and Central Dispatch did not meet in July to have an opportunity to talk about this. I am 100% behind going to the public and asking for a ballot surcharge increase to support new operational equipment needed, including, you know, all the, all the infrastructure that's needed for communications as well, as long as the equipment in our center, to get us back to where we should be. And that funding is going to cost a lot of money. Up till today, we really didn't have that number in front of us in detail, and I want to thank Jamelle for supplying that to us. My concern is, and I've learned this through 22 years of serving up here on the County Board of Commissioners, it's, it's, they, they, the public, know that we're here every day and we're diving into the detail, and that's why it was easy for us to vote the last increase in, which was denied by the Public Service Commission. But for the public to understand this issue, the need, the requirement, how the money will be spent, and the necessity for it, is going to take more than eight weeks. It's at five months, as Commissioner Wheelock indicated. We've got Octo, we've got September and October. That is not enough time to educate the public. And I hate to have something good that we want to have happen go down in failure because this was just, this was presented on a short timeframe with not enough time to go out and properly, for us to educate the public and for the user groups to educate the public. My opinion is, it's the right thing to do, but it's doomed for failure because of the shortness that we have to present this on the November ballot. So, I'm all for it. I think we just, I think we set ourselves up for failure by sticking in on the ballot in such a short notice.
Charlie?
Yeah, this was brought on us very late. It's absurd. We never even discussed surcharge versus millage. This is a tax increase. I don't care how you look at it, unless you're going to sit here and tell me you're going to take that general fund money and reduce it on the general fund that you're taking now from it. Public's not going to vote for a tax increase. Public's suffering out there. This took years to get to this point. No excuse for it. Bad management. I will not support it.
Chris?
We're going about this bass ackwards. We heard a gentleman at public comment come up here and say, well, you know, the equipment needs to be sunset. You know, what, what are you doing here? The public isn't going to know. We don't know what we're doing here. We don't know what equipment we're buying. We have not talked to Metro Fire. We have not talked to Rural Fire. We have not talked to the city police. We have not talked to North Flight. We have spoken with no one. All we have heard from administration is, we need money. Yes, we do, but it is our responsibility as representatives of the taxpayer to spend it wisely, to show the public what they are getting for their money. This, in the 11th hour, is wrong. Now, if, now, first of all, I want to say, all those who do not support public safety, raise your hands. We all support public safety. That isn't the question here. The question here is how to move forward, whether or not we are informing the public with enough time, letting them know what our needs are, speaking with our first responders, sitting down, communicating. It's not going to take that long to do that. It is going to take longer than eight weeks, which is all we have for a ballot question here. This, in my estimation, was extremely poorly handled. If, we have known for a long time, we heard in our budget hearings from Jamelle, that she needs equipment. Yeah. All right, let's sit down and plan for it. This isn't the way to do it. And I have to tell you, as, as a taxpayer, I would be sorely disappointed moving forward with what I have here.
Any other Commissioners? Larry?
Well, I'd like to make a, just a slight remark regarding staff. Yes, when, here's the situation we had. We had a vote from the Board of Commissioners to increase the surcharge based on a legal opinion from other counties, and we did not have an opinion from the Attorney General. We went ahead and moved forward, voted for it, thinking we had the funding in place. And, you know, 40 days, you know, time limit, we find out that, no, we don't have that funding in place. And so, it is incumbent upon the staff to do their job to properly inform the Board of Commissioners that there is an option. It's their job to give us options. It's their job to give us the information as soon as possible. It's unfortunate that, that the time period between the denial from the Public Service Commission and the other entity that had to review this, and the ability for us to put something on the ballot intersected so quickly to the point where we really didn't have time to really respond to a ballot question. But it is upon, it is incumbent upon them, in my opinion, to at least inform us of this option, let us make the decision as policyholders or policy individuals and say, yes, we need it, but this is not the approach. This is not the right process, as Commissioner Max Power has said, which I agree with. So, I would be disappointed in our administrator and our Central Dispatch Director if they had not brought this to our attention and said, this is an option. However, I still believe this is not the right approach. We need to plan for it 12 months ahead of time at a minimum, get the user groups ready to go, get, get an education process ready, because that's the minimum amount of time it takes to even consider the likelihood of passing a ballot question. But at least they had the obligation of informing us. I don't, I don't down them for that. And their reaction time was pretty small because we thought we had it in place. But, so I don't want to have staff walking out of here with heads down. If we don't pass this thing, we're just going to have to say, listen, we need to move forward with a process and put this on the next available ballot, you know, in the next 18 months or two years, so.
Any other Commissioners? At this time, I would like to open the public hearing on the proposed ballot language for 911 public safety, call answering the dispatch service system surcharge. So I would open up the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make comment? Jamelle?
Jamelle Anderson, Grand Travis 911 Dispatch Director. There's a lot of information and a lot of comments going around. I would like to thank Chief Flynn and Mr. Higgins and Chief Weber for their public comments. I agree with part of what Commissioner Max Power said. Raise your hand if you don't support public safety. And I too wish that we, we, myself, I wish that I had been able or had given this to you earlier. I can't go back in time. I can't make that right now. I cannot change when you receive this information. Having said that, there's not a Commissioner here, nor a public safety person, who's not well-aware of every single piece of information about what our needs are, what we've talked When we have gone through the budget process, the equipment that I gave out to you today, which is not a new list, it might be in a new format, there is nothing on there that has not been, most of it has been repeatedly, annually brought to the budget process, and there hasn't been funding for it. I do understand that. I do understand you just can't shake the money tree. It doesn't work that way. You have limited resources, we all do, and it's what are you going to do with those? We are in a position where we will continue to function because that's just what we do and we have to. But is it fair to, is it fair to the public? Is it fair to staff? Is it fair to our responders for our maintenance, contractual maintenance people to have to go pull old cards out of used equipment that's been taken out of the EOC years ago because that's the only place they can get parts anymore? You know, our recorder, which will be coming up, we'll look at, at funding. We go to get information off that, and sometimes we can't, it's, it doesn't function. And that's not a very comfortable place for me to be as a dispatch director because the huge majority of the time, those recordings save our backsides. They indicate that we did do the right thing at the right time with the resources that we had, and they indicate the same thing for our responders. Well, when you go back and tell someone we don't have that, unfortunately, they assume that something, we're doing something wrong, we've erased it, or we've done something, which isn't even feasible. But we're, we're not in a good position with that. The paperwork I gave you, the handouts I gave you, a critical component list of stable, a stable 911 system. Part of that is not, is having a system that's supported and, you know, have to, you know, get parts from the basement somewhere. Our capital priorities, as I said, many of them have been repeatedly brought for funding. I do understand the Commissioners' limitations with that, and if you do decide to wait two years or another year for this, which obviously is your option, then we need to consider, okay, what do we do when there's not a part in the basement? Because that, that, you know, that is a high, highly potential issue to happen. I gave you a chart of the surcharges. You did, when, when we brought this to you last week, there was a millage option and a surcharge option identified, and the different revenue that would be generated by different amounts of that. So you did look at that and did choose surcharge at that point. The surcharge chart tells you how much funding surcharge would, would give us and how that's calculated, how much it would take for us to fund our operation, and then look at capital funding on top of that. I gave you a frequently asked questions list, which should answer all of the questions, or at least the high majority of them, that both you and the public have. I did put information out on our Facebook page because I, I don't want people to think that we're trying to slip something through and that it's not an honest effort. It is an honest effort, and I have no problem answering any question. Anybody has. So I put it on Facebook to let people know, we took this to public safety. There's going to be a public hearing. We want you to be involved. Call your Commissioners. That post reached 14,528 people. It was shared 13 times among those people. There were 38 comments. 130 people liked it. Not all the comments were positive. There were questions, some of which we were able to answer on there, some of which not because we didn't have the decisions that we need to answer some of those questions. And then yesterday, when I was here, I posted a reminder to let people know, the hearing is tomorrow. Please contact your Commissioners if you have an opinion and can't be at the meeting. That post reached over 8,000 people. 72 people liked it. There was not one comment, positive or negative, about that reminder. In August, well, in the ballot this month that went out, there were several 911 centers that went out for surcharge. Most of them were renewal, and every single one of them passed by a fairly significant amount. All of them were similar or greater than the amount that we are looking at. I also, if you, if you are interested and wish to see how every 911 center in Michigan is, is funded, the State 911 Committee has a chart, and I have copies of it. I mean, it shows you which ones collect surcharge, which ones collect millage, which ones collect both, how many have funds that they, like a capital fund that they keep and add money to every year. And we're in the position that we're in partly because it's been such a long time. And I agree with Sunny. When we went out before, before it was a surcharge increase, and it was a substantial increase, we had had a study done, we'd had a consultant come in, and, you know, what do we need? What should we do with our, our communication system? And the recommendation was an entirely new system at a very high cost. So that is what we, we went with. And we had committees, and we had many, many meetings with user groups. I will, unfortunately, which I didn't know this until much later, there were a lot of people who were less than upfront about their lack of support for that effort. And I have no problem with people who disagree with me. I mean, it happens, and that's fine. I just, we need to, people need to say what they think. And if they support something, great, and we'll move forward. If they do not, then let's go back to the drawing board because we all have a lot, a lot of things to do, and if we are doomed for failure, look, I have a life too, and I'm more than willing to go out every night, educate the public. I respectfully but vehemently disagree with the comments that eight weeks is not enough time to educate the public. The public is not stupid, and this is a complicated issue. They don't have to become 911 experts, but they do need to know, what do we want? Why are we asking for it? Where's the money going to come from? How much will it cost them? And those types of questions. But that's not beyond an educational process that doesn't take a year to do. So, that is my opinion, and I, I respect all of you. I do hope that you will move past the fact of how this happened because it was unfortunate. And I do apologize. and I do apologize for that. But, I hope that that in itself will not prevent you from seriously considering this. If we wait for another surcharge, it cannot be implemented. It's only once a year it can be implemented, which is July 1st. So, even if we go out right now, if it does go through in November, we cannot implement the surcharge until July 1st. If we wait another year, that's July 1st of 2016. And our equipment right now is, I mean, could it hold on till then? Yeah, maybe. I don't know. I don't know. I just hope that we don't have to continue going on like we are, and that we can put a plan in place. Mr. Higgins said that, you know, the planning is important. Well, we can plan all we want to for capital improvements and what we need for equipment, but if it never gets funded, that planning doesn't do us a whole lot of good either. So, I hope that that helps to answer some questions, and if anybody has anything else for me, please let me know. If I don't know the answer, I will find out.
Charlie?
Jamel, do you know how many areas use millage versus surcharge? What's the ratio there? What's the proportion?
It's probably pretty well balanced between, and some do both. And it varies. When you look at the surcharge chart the state has, it doesn't necessarily indicate whether that's a voter approved or a commission, Board of Commission want. If it's lower, it's usually just the Board of Commission. If it's higher, it's usually the voters. You know, when I speak to other directors and talk to other directors, I have a level of envy over the ones that have a capital improvement fund, which, and I've been here 30 years, I haven't been the director that long, but we've never had a capital improvement fund for Grand Travers 911, where money is set aside on an annual basis, so that when we do need equipment, it can be funded. And we need that. Many, many years ago, before I was the director, when surcharge first became available, the director at that time made a recommendation to the board, which I don't think, I don't know if any of you were here or not, I have no idea, but what his suggestion was, was that that money be used for capital, that the board continue to fund, just like they were at that time, and then the surcharge be set aside for a capital fund, so that when we needed equipment, it could get replaced. And that did not happen at that time. Again, we can't go back. I mean, we're where we're at. We need to move forward. But, there are a lot of things coming down the pike, that, things that are already here. You know, we're doing everything we can. We have, we've brought in a minimum of $1 million in grant funding. I mean, we do everything we can to try and make the best out of what we have, the best bank for the buck. I mean, I have people who can fix things and tweak things and make things work, just because they want them to, and that's what we do. And that's okay. That probably is not going to change. But, give us, you know, give us the tools that we need to provide the service that we want to provide, not just to our responders. I mean, they're a high priority. We don't want somebody getting hurt because something doesn't work. And Theo is right. We've had issues. We've band-aided things. We've put some towers up. You know, we keep applying for grants. One thing about that is there was so much homeland security money, that's why we ended up getting all that we did. But, that's not the case anymore. It's a lot more competitive, and the grants are fewer and far between. So, it's harder for us to get funded that way. I mean, we're working with a regional group, trying to see, you know, if we can buy common equipment, because everything doesn't have to necessarily, everybody doesn't have to own the same thing. You can share things. And that's progressed well, I think. We're in the second round of grant funding for that, and I hope that we can purchase something off of our list and take, you know, cross off some of these things. That doesn't take away the fact that we need an ongoing funding source for capital. And the wording of the ballot, when you mentioned the sunset part of it, many counties word their ballot language up to $1.90 or whatever they, whatever their amount is. And then, once the capital expenses that are necessary are taken care of, they can back that down again. The commissioners can back it down, and then say, "Okay, well, we're going to back it down to $1.20 or whatever," and see that we'll keep funding, and maybe we'll keep putting a little bit in capital. But, there are adjustments that can and should be made in those situations.
One other question. The PSC nixed our 42 cent Board of Commissioners decision. What did that mean to you? And how you think that's going to impact asking for $1.85 or $90? Not that they have to approve it, but how is the public going to interpret that?
The Public Service Commission litigation, I have a very strong opinion about the Public Service Commission, which would not benefit me to say out loud. Their handling of the entire situation was terrible for every 911 center in the state that got involved in that. We went through years of litigation. A Court of Appeals repeatedly said that the MPSC did not follow the law and did not do what they were supposed to do, and yet, there was little recourse for us. We ended up losing a lot of money, because we could not implement the surcharge, the 80 cents at that time, that we needed. And they said, "No, no, you don't," even though it was demonstrated that we could, that we did in the state 911 office authorize that, and said, "Yes, it is reasonable and necessary funding." So, to answer your question without going on a rant too much, the Public Service Commission does not have to approve this. Fortunately, they've, they're a little further away from 911 operations, and people who actually do know what that, the 911 operations, like the state 911 committee, are overseeing that. So, if the public decides to authorize a surcharge for us, then they authorize the surcharge for the length of time that it's identified.
That wasn't my point.
You mean, okay, I'm sorry.
My point was, the public saw the Public Service Commission nicks 42 cents. Why should they vote for more themselves? They might think there's rationale why they didn't approve that.
If any of them have ever dealt with the Public Service Commission, they'll understand.
I don't know. I'm just talking about the perception. You're telling us you have to sell this to the public. You're going to have a hell of a time selling this to the public, the way this is set up, whether you have eight weeks or not, you know?
It's important to note that the Court of Appeals approved those surcharges twice, and the MPSC defied the Court of Appeals and required us to go back through, kept litigating the issue. So, what, after the second time that the Court of Appeals said, "We agree with you," and then it went back to the Public Service Commission, the group that was involved in the class action lawsuit finally said, "We're going nowhere with this. We're just spending legal money on this." And the MPSC, a political body, not a court of law, has made their decision, and they're defying the court of law. So, there's not much we can do about it.
So, we should sell that to the public?
Well, I just did. I mean, but that's, that's the reality of the MPSC and the Court of Appeals. If you put all your, if some, one body says yes, and the other body says no, it's the credibility of the bodies that you have to look at. I mean, to me, you know, we made our case in court, and the MPSC said, "We don't care. We're not going to let you have that anyway. We're not going to approve that rate to be assessed on the phone calls."
I agree 100% on the credibility point. I don't know if this is being presented in incredible fashion to the public, that's all.
If I could make a couple of comments, I mean, you know, we got to the point where we realized that, you know, we went through a budget process. During that budget process, Jamel's needs were identified. I think we all kind of discussed and thought that maybe they really do need a separate funding source, that they need an additional funding source to take care of the capital, because the county's never going to come up with the money out of the general fund. You know, apologies have been made all around for the timing on this, and I appreciate all the comments of the commissioners. They're absolutely right, spot on, when they say that a much longer, you know, advanced period needs to be set up. The, you know, the information that Jamel presented today needed to be presented months ago, so that the public safety groups need, can look at it, so that the public can look at it, so the Board of Commissioners can look at it, and then we can decide on, and also, the issue of general fund funding for all of this, which is now into the $700,000 range, whether that can be discussed as part of this. I mean, all of that, you're spot on. You're right. Nobody's, nobody can dispute that. But, you know, I felt that, you know, at the 11th hour, when I looked at, well, we've got August to get this ready, and remember, two years ago, it was like August 26th was the deadline. And I went downstairs to the clerk's office, and we looked at the book. Bonnie was out. She was not in the office at that time. We looked at the book. We saw July 29th. Fortunately, that was the date for petitions, not for, you know, two pages later, the ballot languages from local governments. We thought that July 29th was the deadline. The board meeting was on the 30th. We missed the deadline. When I got back and I found out that we had not missed the deadline, I couldn't let it go by, because the safety of the community is an important thing. We're, I knew we were going to take criticism. I told Chris, I told Chris in my office that, you know, we were going to take it on the chin for this, because it's so last minute. But, the equipment that needs to be in 911, and we've been, you know, not be able to fund for so many years, is starting to become a real problem. And if we don't take this to the commissioners and tell them, "This is your last chance to get it on this ballot. Take it or leave it." You know, I mean, I know it's a bad thing, but it's also the responsible thing for me to do. As Larry, I appreciate what you just said. We really, you know, my first gut reaction was, "We did miss the deadline, and we shouldn't do this." But, then I thought, hmm, we really need that money for 911 and for public safety purposes for our community. So, that's where we are. I appreciate that it's going to take another two years to get this on the ballot. But, you know, you're correct. We should have been doing this from February, when we first had our meeting with 911.
One other question for you.
And I accept full responsibility for that.
Do you think this is a time if this doesn't happen, now that we should take a look at a regional approach to 911?
We are looking at a regional approach.
Even more?
Yes, but I don't know that that's going to abate our need for funding. This is a local funding solution that needs to be found.
It's going to be shared, though.
It'll be shared, and maybe the costs will be less. And, you know, from that matter, you can each year reduce your surcharge. It's an up to surcharge that was going to be requested. The same thing with the millage. If you're going to request a millage, you can reduce the millage if you come up with a, you know, a multi-county solution that reduces costs.
Is it time for that? Look at that?
We are looking at that.
We have been looking at that.
We've been looking at that for 15 years.
That's been...
Why should we spend this $2 million if we don't know? We should look, put all our money together at this point.
We do know. We continue to look at it. We have a regional group that meets. We've, we are applying for grant funding as that group. We are looking at equipment. A regional, I support a regional dispatch center. I always have. I support a regional dispatch authority, and I have a strong opinion about that. Grant funding that I applied for was, the intent of that was to look at a regional center and to perhaps fund that. There are a lot of obstacles to going with a regional center. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm not saying it shouldn't. I'm saying that that's not going to solve this problem today. We're on that path. We'll continue to be on it.
What I see is, we're going to just continue on with the same problem. I mean, I don't see us attacking the systemic issue behind all this.
Did you attend the 911 thing that we had at the Hagerty Center?
No.
Okay. That was all about regional, and we had speakers from Lansing, and we had all kinds of people, you know, to discuss how we can move forward with that. And we're working on it. We're pursuing it.
It seems like the governor's looking at a more regional approach statewide. He also talks about incentives, which are grants for regionalization. Maybe there would be more grants available if you regionalized.
That's, that is the type of grant that we are currently waiting to see the results on with the group that we, that we're working with, the 911 Connect Group. And we applied for the first round of that, and we were not granted funding, so we've gone back to apply for another round of that, and that's exactly what that is.
Thanks. Jamel, could you talk about voiceover internet protocol, which the gentleman made a comment about, and also the CAD system? I know this was a whole day seminar that was at the Hagerty Center. Can you encapsulize that, about what our needs are, and why we aren't able to get to somebody that's out in the woods someplace and may not be able to get to them, because we don't have that ability?
Well, first of all, I would like to clarify that the last legislation that went through for 911, initially many years ago, it was only for landline phones, because that's all there was. So, when we went through the last round, which then turned into the whole MPSC fiasco, the wording was changed to "all devices." And it was specifically vague, because there's so much new technology, that you don't know what is going to be able to call 911 next. It might not be a phone, per se. So, surcharge is implemented on landlines, cellphones, voiceover internet, prepaid 911. Those are all considered devices, and the surcharge does apply to those. There are different, the prepaid, there's a formula that the state does with that, because we don't collect it per county. The state collects it on an average by the state and then reimburses. But, our equipment, the backbone of 911 was built 40 years ago. And we have made improvements, obviously. We have, we built a new tower. We've done different things. But, we're, we are a long way from where we need to be. Text to 911 is almost an expectation with the public. We cannot do text to 911. We don't have the technology to do that. As Chief Weber said, you know, when we page out some of the rural areas, they don't have coverage. We need, we need to take care of that. We currently, part of our fix has been to add more transmitters throughout the county, so that some of the outlying areas, we could page off our central tower, and then page again off a tower that was in their area. Well, that makes the dispatchers have to do everything at least twice when they do that. That's a lot of precious time, when they have to page the entire call off one tower and then redo it on the next tower. If phones are ringing off the hook, if it's a structural fire, I mean, it's not, it's just not good. Part of what we have been talking about is a simulcast system that allows us to page once. We don't have to repeat those pages. And if we are sending two departments that each need to be dispatched off two towers, we get to do it four times. I don't think I answered your question, Herb. There's a lot of, there are a lot of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just, you know, I think you hit it when you said that our equipment was brought onboard when the Prince's telephone was brought into play. A lot of changes have happened over the years since then, and we have not met those needs. And, you know, with the texting, with the CAD, you know, I think, you know, Charlie, you're right, that the regional, the whole UP is under one regional 911 system. The challenge is, is that we still have to have our central dispatch, even with a regional. You cannot do all your work out of one dispatch center, out of, for all of the Northern Michigan. Each individual county still has to have their own dispatch system. It's just how the other part works to be able to get all that other in place.
I would just like to say, the UP is looked at nationwide, for the example that they set. And they did create a UP-wide authority, and they share equipment, they share technology, they did maintain their PSAPs, their 911 centers, mostly because of the distance between them, and that was their choice to do that. There are other options that can be considered if and when that time comes. There are, like CCE, which is Charlevoix, Sheboygan, and Emmett. That's a three-county dispatch center. And, I mean, there's a lot of things to look at that can help with costs and other things. I just want you to know, we, that's something we've pursued for a long time, and we continue to do that. Hopefully, we can, you know, share some of the equipment. It used to be, everybody had to have their own phone system. Well, if you go to an IP phone system, everybody doesn't have to own it. You can share that. And that also gives you connectivity between your 911 center. So, those are all things that we are very aware of and rigorously pursuing.
I don't know if Greg would like to say a word. I know he did have some experience with this in Maryland, was it, Greg? Could you tell us what you guys, your state of the art, what was it, what it was down there, and what the capabilities were, and what you see here? I don't want to put you on the spot.
He did.
You just did.
(laughing).
Good morning, Greg Bird. I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for Grand Travers County. Thanks, Charlie. Yes, my previous lifetime, from '93 until I left Maryland '11, I was involved in 911, the fire service. I saw the very same transformation and technology needs come upon our county there. Very small county, much the size of, like, Antrim or Benzy County. But, we had antiquated system for so many years. Funding's a little different in Maryland. There is surcharges that are automatically built in, and it goes to a state authority that's not a Public Safety Commission, but there's funds there. It's very odd to come to such a large county and not see that there is a fund or a surcharge for capital improvements. And I feel very much for 911 of not being able to strategically plan three, five, 10 years, and try and... years and try and, you're never gonna get ahead, I shouldn't say that. You're not really ever gonna get ahead of technology unless you're very forward-thinking. But, there is a hope of being able to stay consistent with it or keep up on it. I, I'm, it's very hard to leave my old digs. It is a relief in some way to be here and not worry about it, but it's very hard to, to sit here and see the state of, I've never been anywhere in the United States to where individual entities own their own radio system. And I can't imagine what a nightmare it is for the dispatchers to, to have to interact and, on certain fire scenes where we have county entities that can't even talk to one another adequately. My hope is, is that there is something done and moved forward with a strategic plan that very rapidly we bring into a 911 system that effectively serves our public. A very smooth-running 911 system that not only makes it effective for the dispatchers to, to maximize their time, and also, it is a stressful job, but not make it as stressful as having to re-announce a call on four different towers. This county is growing. In my emergency management and going through the, the hazard mitigation plan update, this county is growing at a rapid pace, not only with citizens but with visitors. That's what we are. That's who we are. We need to embrace that. We owe it to our public safety responders to have a state-of-the-art, an adequate system to keep our citizens and our public safety professionals safe. But, yes, Charlie, I did go through that transition. There was a lot of partnerships formed. We did a regionalization thing and, and not so much that there was one 911 center, but the nine poor, small eastern shore centers all would band together, and we had the same equipment, and we cross-trained all of our people. So that, we had hurricanes and tropical storms. If, if my staff was out, I could bring in staffing from other dispatch centers. They could effectively sit down, and it was the same equipment and run it and operate it. We also partnered, as I left there, with the state of Maryland on a digital trunked 700 megahertz radio and wireless data system. And for a county that had no tax base, that was very poor, we entered into an agreement, built towers with the state, and upgraded our system until the 700 system. We ended up with a $31 million radio system that cost us 3.1 because of partnerships that were formed. I don't know if that's right here. That technology is, is not here, but there is lots of options that hopefully, as a whole, that, that we can find a way to, to upgrade and, and again, protect our citizens and our public safety folks. That's what 911 does.
Greg, how long were we without cellphone service during the Cherry Festival?
About three to four hours. And, and data was not compromised. It was just the, the cell service. We, we had brought in and made arrangements to have cap, uh, cap, capacity for 500,000 incoming, outgoing phone calls. That part of the system failed for about three to four hours, which is why I know we had more than 500,000 people in, in our county at that day.[797.82][797.82](laughing) But it affected everybody. It, it affected us at the, the unified command post. Thank goodness, we had the capability of using 800 megahertz and using the county radio system as first responders, because when that system went down, that was right at the time that the drowning occurred in Boardman Lake. So...
Okay. Thank you. Jamel, anything else?
I don't think so, unless somebody has any other questions for me.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jamel? Okay. Anybody else in the public that would like to make comment as part of this public hearing?
Elise Acropas, citizen of Garfield Township. Caveat, I lost my glasses yesterday. Those of you that know me, I am almost blind. I have prescription sunglasses and chosen out that option, so bear with me as I made, unfortunately, my remarks on a cellphone. So, okay. 911, this is a toughie. One of those challenges that as commissioners you don't enjoy in office, and we all wish this argument was about nuts and bolts and park benches, because you know I'd be up here talking about park benches, but it's not. And it's not that we don't respect our dispatchers so much in what they do for us, and we acknowledge their importance and the role they play in making our county safer. But still, it doesn't excuse the process not being followed. There's a process in place, and it's in place to protect all of us. It's in place so that no commissioners have to make decisions that are this tough at last minute. When an item appears on a ballot, there's an implied belief by voters that it has been through this process. That what appears on the ballot is the best possible product being offered by our elected officials. It's not put out there and then see what the voters say about it at the moment. It's not pass the bill and read it later. It's on the ballot after a process. There's a trust between the voters and those that they put in office to be the best stewards of their money possible. We can't stop paying taxes because you all will come after us, but we can control the people sitting in those seats that choose how we pay our taxes and how they are spent. When that trust is broken, there's a breakdown that begins. I've watched this breakdown occur with this board and our citizens for the last several years, and that's why I ran to be on this board. I believe that last-minute push-through of a ballot measure, any ballot measure, 911 or sewage, is just that, the beginning of a breakdown. It's the beginning of a lack of trust with your board, the board that represents you and that you elected to be there. It also, in fact, shows a lack of due diligence required to say to the voters, "Yes, this is absolutely the best possible product that we can offer you for your money, and we respect your money and how we spend it." There is no doubt that 911 is an integral part of our community, absolutely, hands down. I'm a first-responder mom. This is near and dear to my heart. How very important 911 is to each and every one of us. But by being emergency services, that doesn't mean you still aren't held to the same strict fiduciary standards that every other government department is. I watch Sheriff Fensley up here jumping through hoops and researching and going through months and almost years' processes to ask for funds. He doesn't come up here at last minute, and he's emergency services. Emergency services is critical to us, yet still, I'm sorry, I can't see a word that I'm saying, so you have to give me a moment. Emergency services is critical to us, yet still required as a department that is using funds given by the citizens to use those in the most responsible way possible. I would be up here speaking about the water department, too. I would be up here speaking about facilities management, and you know I would be up here speaking about parks. This is not a referendum on 911, the management of 911, the staff members of 911. It just happens to be the department asking for a last-minute ballot addition today. In my view, as a county resident, I don't think last minute is ever okay. Never. Not even for such a critical department. The people that I voted to be the guardians of my taxes should really take this more seriously. I'm concerned about the capital assets request of the department and the equipment asked for, and whether it's the best possible use of our money. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. We don't have time to know. Have we addressed the fact that we are in and also moving towards regional authorities? Coordination and what equipment that requires? Are we going to spend this money the best way possible? For over a year now, it has come to my attention that the radio system we are running in this county has many problems. I've taken it upon myself to learn more about radios, and I'm way, way over my head. And that's why I rely with experts, and I've been meeting with them for the last year discussing the radio system in our county. And what would be the best thing that I could do when I'm on the board to help our emergency services have the best radio system possible? I have a strong reason to believe that the options sought out right now are not the best for our citizens. I have 30 seconds. Allow me, the blind girls.
Go ahead.
(laughing) It's a matter of our officers and our first responders' safety. After all, that's our job here, public health and safety. The safety of the citizens and our citizens are our first responders. I know for a fact that they have had radio problems that have compromised their safety. That is one of the unarguable duties of government, the health and safety of our public. I argue all the time in front of you as to what is our role to step in and not step in in government. This is one, public safety. Our current equipment needs to be reevaluated, as well as the bidding process needs to be followed. I have concerns about RFPs in this department. We need to look into new equipment before writing a blank check, whether it's a surcharge or a millage, I don't care. I have strong concerns that the equipment sought out is not going to be the fix that we all want for our system. It takes time to do this. If this is passed, are we committed to using the asset list provided? Have we even discussed that? We've never had time to meet with our local agencies, with our sheriff's departments, our city fire, our city police, our metro fire, our rural north flight. We haven't met with any of them and said, "Hey, here's our equipment list. Is this gonna do what we need it to do for you?" And now we're stuck purchasing over a million in assets that maybe aren't the best possible equipment. I'm concerned about how many lines are eligible. How does this affect an entity like TCAPS or Munson Medical Center? How does this affect business owners? I haven't heard business owners mentioned once by any member of the board. It's a duty of the board to vet this entire process out before presenting it to the people for a vote, to make sure what is asked for is absolutely the best for our citizens. I give you the road commission as an example. We all know what they went through to get their millage passed. A last-minute agenda six days before a ballot deadline doesn't make any sense to most of us out there. Why the rush? We've been talking about 911 deficiencies for a long time, and I don't care when someone's vacations are, and unless it, their vacations are several months long, I'm having a hard time understanding the lack of protocol and due diligence followed here. Again, last minute is never okay to the voters. We joke all the time about the glacial speed of government, so when something is shoved at us really fast, I'm gonna question it. Really great ideas take months and years to get passed, yet this is coming at us at last minute? You better bet that those at home are watching and wary, and as I said to you Wednesday, I encourage you to proceed with caution on this measure. There's just too many unanswered questions. It's too fast. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to make comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the board. What would you like to do, Sonny?
What I'd like to do, and what I'm gonna have to do, is two separate things.
Oh, geez.
I have a question.
The, the, the point here to me...
Before you start, I have a question. If we do nothing, if we don't make a motion, is the motion that was made last week stand?
No, the motion was just to have a public hearing.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't. Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't.
It was the mo, the motion was to move forward with a public hearing to discuss the option of putting it on the ballot.
No. That's not true.
Somebody can bring me up to speed on that?
Do you have it on your computer to look at last week's minutes?
Minutes?
You would've got a copy. I wasn't at that meeting, so I'm thinking, I thought it was to pass something, but you should probably bring it up.
I believe, I believe the motion was to proceed with the surcharge after a public hearing set this morning. I believe that was the motion that was passed.
That's right.
But, you know, that's not, it, I guess the discussion that I have right now is that for a number of years now, we have identified that we have a deficient funding for 911. We have antiquated equipment that needs to be upgraded, and the safety of our first responders and our public are being compromised by this deficiency. I am as upset as anyone is that this comes to us on this short timeframe. I think without question, we have to figure out a way to identify additional funding for 911. I chaired one of the first regional committees to develop 911 dispatching in our, in our area. We met regularly with Leland, Benzey, and Calcauska Counties. And that was 10 years ago. You know, so it's not a new problem. It's not a new concern. It's not, the lack of funding is, is not new. You know, September 11th, 2001 was a godsend to this community and emergency services. You know, and, you know, they've, we've received over half a million dollars in funding from Homeland Security to Central Dispatch. Our fire departments have probably received another million, million and a half dollars in addition to that, all a result of a terrorist act that happened a long ways from here. Truly did not affect us at the time, but we have benefited from it. You know, I'm almost ashamed to say how much we've benefited from it, because it, but it is true, we've received probably, you know, I don't know what the exact numbers are, but I'm, I'm guessing we've received in this community well over $2 million in Homeland Security money. Maybe $5 million, Greg? You know, so, all a benefit to the people of our community, and what the half a million dollars that Central Dispatch got has allowed us to allow what we'd identified as a crucial funding need to let it slide. And I'm a little embarrassed to the fact that we have allowed it to slide, because this funding was coming from somewhere else, so we just didn't figure we had to address it. But the need was real. The need was our responsibility, and we did not do it.
I have a question.
Sorry.
I clearly came out of that meeting with the clear understanding, the purpose behind the public hearing for this morning was to give us the opportunity to hear public comment and to determine whether we wanted to move forward with a ballot language, and we wanted to hear first from the public, and defer that decision till this morning. So I'd like to challenge any concept or any thought that we had already passed it, subject to a public hearing, because the public hearing was the basis of us coming back and making a final decision on whether we wanted to put this on the ballot or not.
Your public hearing was a friendly amendment to my, my motion to put it on the ballot.
Dean's got it, I believe.
Moved by Lem Cool, seconded by Thomas to recommend authorization for a 911 surcharge amount of $1.85 to be placed on the November 4th, 2014 ballot. Commissioner Enman made a friendly amendment to hold a public hearing on August 11th at 9:00 AM, which was agreed to by Commissioner Lem Cool and Commissioner Thomas. Roll call vote, yes, five, no, two, nay, Rennie and Max Bauer.
Mr. Rennie.
Where we at? What are we doing?
If we don't take a motion or do anything to rescind that motion, then the motion stands as read, and we close this meeting and go home.
All right. All right. Question for council. Do you agree with the opinion of, there is an opinion on the floor right now.
No, there's, what you have is draft minutes.
Yeah, but you have the draft minutes. I mean...
Right. What I would, I would suggest is that somebody, if somebody does not want to move forward with this proposal, then somebody should make a motion.
Do we need a motion to reconsider, or do we just make a motion?
I would, I would suggest a motion for reconsideration.
All right. I'd make a motion to reconsider the, the previous motion of the Board of Commissioners to move forward with the 911 surcharge.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor to reconsider the motion from last week's meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes, the protocol on reconsideration is majority, or two-thirds of the standing.
It is...
Within 30 days.
I believe it's majority. Let me take a, just take a look at the board rolls.
I think it is a majority, but...
No, it can be my majority, 10.33 is motion to reconsider, and there's no two-thirds.
But motion of Commissioner, of elected commissioners, are those present?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Just has to be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side.
Yeah, and I did.
Okay.
You voted for the prevailing side?
He did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rennie and I were the only nays.
That's right. Any other discussion?
Does the support have to come from the prevailing side?
No.
No.
No. Just the motion.
Charlie?
Would you read the motion again?
The motion is to reconsider the motion that was made at the Public Health and Safety Meeting on...
August 6.
August 5.
Six.
Six.
Was that motion, the full Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So if the motion passes, then we won't have it on the 2000, on the November ballot.
No, we just have another motion to put on the floor, whether we're going to do it or not.
Or if the motion fails, then it goes on the ballot.
If the motion fails, it goes on the ballot.
Right.
It's that simple.
That's what I think it is.
Any other discussion? I will call for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Max Bauer?
Yes.
Wheelack? Wheelak?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Enman?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Limkool?
No. Motion fails.
Stands on the ballot.
Three, it stays on the ballot. Any other discussion? All, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Well, I've got one other question here. The ballot language that we have in front of us is not what the motion is, is not the motion, doesn't match the motion that was made.
That's correct.
The ballot language that I've got in front of me says we're going to charge up to $1.90 per month, and I just heard...
The motion was at $1.85.
The motion was $1.85. It's $1.85.
So this ballot language is wrong. And do we have to approve ballot language because I don't like the way this reads?
We did it at $1.85.
Yes, you have to approve the ballot language in order for it to go on the ballot.
We did it already.
No, we did not. We have not approved the ballot language.
We can correct this ballot language in front of you.
No, I know, but this is the actual ballot language.
The clerk is telling us we'll have the opportunity to correct the ballot language. Any other discussions or concerns?
It was no, three noes, three yeses.
The only, the only thing that I can say is I hope that all of our emergent, first responder units, all of our communities get out and provide a united front to support this millage, or surcharge, not millage.
Herb? You really should do a motion then to correct the ballot language in front of you to say $1.85.
It was, the first, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, was that the, I clearly understood your motion to be $1.85 originally.
Right.
I don't know where this language came from.
This says $1.90.
This stands as $1.85. If you're happy with $1.85, then we don't need to do anything.
Well, I've got a question about the language. Can I ask?
Sure.
Okay. The first sentence says, shall Grand Traverse County be authorized to assess a charge of up to $1.90 per month against all landlines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Okay. The last sentence then says, if this proposal is approved, then the current charge will be increased from 80 cents to $1.90 per device per month, which represents an increase of up to. Now, in the first sentence, it says the Grand Traverse County Board can authorize a charge of up to $1.90. I know we're going to change that to $1.85, but in the last sentence, it says it will be assessed. Now, I would prefer, this is just me, I would prefer to have it up to...
All right.
Period. Because if we do not need to spend, you know, $1.85, if we only need to assess $1.65, yet we're asking the public for $1.85 in the last sentence, I just don't like the way this is, the verbiage is, and it's just me.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest then a motion to correct the ballot language would be ordered, if that's what, if that's the change you want to see.
All right. So you want to correct it to say $1.85 in the top line, and then at the bottom, you want to say then the current charge will be increased from 80 cents up to $1.90?
Up to $1.85.
Okay.
Which may, you know, which may represent an increase of up to $1.5.
And it says it will be $1.90, it'll say up, maybe up to $1.85.
You do not want to assess any more than we...
That's right. All right, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to correct the ballot language to say that the board authorized the access, the charge up to $1.85 per month, and then in the last sentence, it will be, the current charge will be increased from 80 cents to $1.85 for up to $1.85 per device per month.
Which represents an increase of $1.5.
Which represents an increase of $1.5.
Yes.
You said may represent.
Yes, which may represent an increase of up to $1.5.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that? A second is comfortable with that?
Will that pass? Muster, legal muster?
Okay, yeah. Roll call.
Wheelak?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Enman?
Yes.
Rennie?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Limkool?
Yes. So, thanks, that takes care of that. Then I was reminded I have not done a second public comment, so is the public who'd like to make a comment?
Chuck Corn, 4111 Summer Hill Road, Traverse City, Michigan. Thank you very much for your serious deliberation today. Once again, it's a, it's an awkward situation when you're dealing with heroes, and I think the people who work in 911 are heroes. I think it's an incredibly taxing job, and I know a lot of people don't make it, but it's not about them. It's about the system. It's about competence in the system. It's about the competence of the other departments. Without being too negative, I've heard a lot of things that would indicate you need to take a long look at where you're going, and don't just give a blank check. I thank you for putting "up to" in the language. That certainly is a good step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public like to make comment? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned.